Please raise your right hand. I, Mike Stroh.
I, Mike Stroh.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And I will in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio.
And that I will in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of council member to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of council member to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Mayor.
I'd like to first introduce my wife Debbie. Would you come up?
There we go.
On live stream, I'd like to say hello to my mother in Springfield, Virginia, my brother in Annandale, Virginia, my son in Hoboken, New Jersey, and I think some Xavier students may be watching from Norwood, Ohio, too. And then just so means so much to me to have my friends, the McKnight's, the Finins, the Hoffman's, Katters, more McKnight's, and the Cedars here to be part of my swearing in.
Well, thank you for coming.
And I'm looking forward to working with all my friends on council here, too. So, anyway, that's it.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clark will take the role.
Mr. Sextro.
Here.
Ms. McDaniel.
Here.
Mr. Stroh.
Here.
Ms. Walker Smith.
Here.
Mr. Patterson.
Here.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
All members being present, we will begin with ordinance 25-75. This is an ordinance appointing Nicholas Damon as a police cadet for the Village of Evendale and declaring it as an emergency. Please, may I have a first reading of the ordinance? That'll cover that.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Stroh.
Yes.
Ms. Walker Smith.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
And a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Walker Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Stroh.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Ms. Walker Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Stroh.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Now, a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Walker Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Stroh.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Ms. Walker Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Stroh.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Now, a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Walker Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Stroh.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Ms. Walker Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Stroh.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
And a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Walker Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Stroh.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Now, I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Ms. Walker Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Stroh.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Now, a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Walker Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Stroh.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Ms. Walker Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Stroh.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Now, a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Walker Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Stroh.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Ms. Walker Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Stroh.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. Walker Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to the committee reports, and the first committee will be the finance committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance Committee, tax revenue results. Mrs. Karachi reported the November receipts totaled over 1.7 million, which is 44% higher than this time last year. This is most likely due to timing of receipts. We expect an offset in December, but hopefully not. Year-to-date receipts totaling approximately 19.8 million, which is 1.8% higher than this time last year. Tax revenues are expected to be fairly consistent with the receipts of 2024 by year-end. Village results, November receipts exceeded expenditures by 467,000. Year-to-date receipts exceeded expenditures by 18,000, just about break even for the year. Ordinances, there'll be two ordinances coming onboard. Gorman Heritage Farm, Let's Turkey, Let's Talk Turkey on the front page of The Inquirer, was a very nice article. More media coverage will be coming in 2026. Executive Director's search will be wrapping up very shortly. The farm has five different underwater springs. Wanted to make the council aware, the environmental covenants document on the wetlands, meaning there's, once the wetlands are managed, they, we have to get approval if we're going to do any construction in that area. Looking at retail food licenses to sell items on the farm shop coming out of the teaching kitchen. Also, land use committee to look at interperceptive center improved flow and potential restrooms. And then over 100 new volunteers in 2025. Recreation side, mark your calendars, please, for this Friday, December 12th. The Hoxworth Blood Drive is, Adam and the Times are?
Nine to 11.
Nine to 11. Sand volleyball courts have been repaired, and there's no poles up there, but the sleeves are in there, and they're being stored, so they don't have to deal with the harsh winter. Eight houses, Pine Lamb and Pie donated their time breaking eight houses and over 300 bags of leaves. And currently going on right now is over 120 gingerbread houses are being built, and there'll be two ordinances on the docket for tonight. Services and engineering, Mr. Jeffers went through monthly report. Open house went very smoothly. It's phenomenal building, and we wish them all luck in their new home away from home. Aerial Systems has received a revised lease, and waiting on that to be received. Glendale-Milford Road Bridge, ODOT will be paving, or paying the decks' surface inspection and possibly funding the repairs, which will be really nice. And ordinance ODOT 2027 program will be, will be including paving Inwood to Cooper Road on Reading Roads. Also, Phase 3 Rec Center, water management of the Evendale Commons Office. And then digital speed limit signs on Cooper seem to be slowing down traffic. If it says you're exceeding too fast, you're over 10 miles an hour over the speed limit. That's all on my report.
Okay, any additions, corrections, or comments? Okay, that'll bring us to Fire and Police. Councilman Patterson.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. From the police, recruiting continues to be a challenge. The department, in their latest round, identified 27 applicants. They whittled it down to two and made a job offer on one, young Mr. Damon, who we just met. He will start at the academy in mid-January. For those watching on television, we need to take a second and commend the work that the police are doing. They are making, they are making significant changes to the speed of their process to respond to the lack, to the smaller applicant classes. They've done it twice in a, twice now in a row, and it really does, it really, in a significant way, changes our odds of getting the best candidates possible. So, really nice job by both Chief Holloway and the whole department. From the Fire Department, pinpoint behavioral health, will begin mental check, mental health checkups for the first time this year. Everybody in the department will get one 60-minute evaluation, and then if they decide to go on their own, on their own, of their own volition, they'll have up to six visits per year that they can do for this new program. It's completely confidential. No personal information is being gathered. Should help tremendously with officers' individual mental health. The bungee silos on Medallion are in the process of being demolished. I saw today that pictures of part of the silo that had voluntarily chosen to collapse all on its own. Contractors are now doing asbestos remediation and implosion scheduled for the spring. The generator of the firehouse is almost optional. Service and department are working out the final details, and are trying hard not to electrocute each other. Fire chiefs are going to meet, and this is Hamilton County, the fire chiefs are going to meet to try and discuss an alternate structure and funding sources for Hamilton County hazmat, so stay tuned for further details. Building and zoning, there's going to be an ordinance tonight to authorize the hiring of a building commissioner to replace Don Mercer. For those of you who don't know Don, Don is a longtime employee, and he's just unbelievably talented. He has made the building process within the village absolutely streamlined and responsive. He does not want a big, a lot of fanfare or a big goodbye, but if you happen to bump into him, please share your appreciation, because he's just been fabulous. Planning Commission is continuing the review of ordinance to regulate the use and placement of solar panels. Please check the PC agenda for further information. We're continuing to look at cars parked on the side of the streets and the problems that they cause. Just as a heads-up for everybody, everybody parks their cars on the side of the street, no problem. Just don't park them in front of other people's driveway and try and park on one side of the street. It's not a big deal. Just take five minutes, think of your neighbors, and we'll all get along better. Duke Energy is wrapping up its work on the gas relief station on Glendale-Milford Road. Road closures are now limited to a couple of hours on Sunday afternoon if they need it. Otherwise, they're going to be, they're going to be gone in the next couple of weeks. Under the category of nice-to-have, we all need to be excited about the fact that Tower Co. is putting in a brand-new 175-foot monopole in Blue Ash on Cooper Road. For those of you who don't like the cellphone reception in the village, part of that may be taken care of in the very near future. And this is not an endorsement of the company. It will, as opposed to the pole that's in Rest Haven, it will have a major The generator of the firehouse is almost optional. Service and department are working out the final details, and are trying hard not to electrocute each other. Fire chiefs are going to meet, this is Hamilton County, the fire chiefs are going to meet to try and discuss an alternate structure and funding sources for Hamilton County hazmat, so stay tuned for further details. Building and zoning, there's going to be an ordinance tonight to authorize the hiring of a building commissioner to replace Don Mercer. For those of you who don't know Don, Don is a longtime employee and is just unbelievably talented. He has made the building process within the village absolutely streamlined and responsive. He does not want a big, a lot of fanfare or a big goodbye, but if you happen to bump into him, please share your appreciation, because he's just been fabulous. Planning Commission is continuing the review of ordinance to regulate the use and placement of solar panels. Please check the PC agenda for further information. We're continuing to look at cars parked on the side of the streets and the problems that they cause. Just as a heads-up for everybody, everybody parks their cars on the side of the street, no problem. Just don't park them in front of other people's driveway and try and park on one side of the street. It's not a big deal. Just take five minutes, think of your neighbors, and we'll all get along better. Duke Energy is wrapping up its work on the gas relief station on Glendale-Milford Road. Road closures are now limited to a couple of hours on Sunday afternoon if they need it. Otherwise, they're going to be, they're going to be gone in the next couple of weeks. Under the category of nice-to-have, we all need to be excited about the fact that Tower Co. is putting in a brand-new 175-foot monopole in Blue Ash on Cooper Road. For those of you who don't like the cellphone reception in the village, part of that may be taken care of in the very near future. And this is not an endorsement of the company. It will, as opposed to the pole that's in Rest Haven, it will have a major carrier attached to the pole, and you can go on Blue Ash's website to find out which carrier it is. Under Cultural Arts, the programs and seasonal offerings, including wine tastings, playoffs in the park, continue to be well-received and attended, planning for tri-county players. A Christmas carol, all the holiday offerings in the winter continues. Please check the Cultural Arts websites for all of their programming. Evendale has been awarded another grant for Photo Focus for 2026, and we've been chosen as a host site for the Queen City Music Festival. So, great job of Susan and her crowd. Mr. Mayor, that's everything.
Any comments, changes?
Just a quick question about the mental health checks for the Fire Department. Does that, I don't know, like, I don't know anything about it, but?
Chief, you want to tell us a little bit about?
Like, the Police Department, that might be something.
Let's bring the chief.
So, this is a local organization that offers this to police and fire departments. I believe the Police Department has an internal program already that they're using.
Okay, that, that was basically my question. If the Fire, you know, is it something that would be beneficial for the Police Department to?
Correct.
That was basically my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? If not, that will, we'll accept that, the Police and Fire report. I have a couple of things. I want to remind the department heads that we're going to go into a training session for crisis communication. Mr., the Organization of Veer Communications has been hired by the village to participate in that situation. I hope you will all mark your calendar for January 13th at 5:00 PM. We are scheduled for a visit to Formica. They will have some sustenance there, because they, we go from there to our council meeting that night at 7:00. Just interestingly enough, the new speed limit trackers on the highway on that road caught a vehicle going 67 miles an hour in a 25 mile-an-hour zone. Really interesting. Oh, I've been notified that the gun range will not be opening in February. Instead, the opening has been put back until the third quarter of 2026. Very unhappy about that, but it is what it is. It is what it is. And also, I note that Marshal Robbie Porter has been cited as a Fire Marshal of the Year for his investigations. Want to tell us?
Year of the Year.
Please, tell us a little more about that.
You have almost as much information as I have. He went to the IIII Columbus Training, and that is the organization that certifies the fire investigators, and he was chosen after being nominated, which, again, I did not know he was nominated, to be the Hamilton County Fire Investigator of the Year. So, we should be proud of him for that. He made a majority of the call-outs and did a lot of work for them in evidence collection and processing the evidence, so.
How many investigators are there in Hamilton County?
On the team, I, I'm not really sure, because on paper is different than what's active.
Yeah, the writer, I read, he really had to do a lot of research and a lot of work.
Yeah, he is, he's done a fabulous job.
We should be proud of him and be very happy that he's part of the village, even him.
Yeah, well, and hopefully the ATF will, will also sponsor him with a dog, and that will just improve his.
Is that going to go forward?
We don't know if it's moving forward yet or not. Hopefully it will, because that'll just improve his skills.
Okay, very good, very good. Any other comments, questions? Okay, then let's go to the ordinances and resolutions. First, we have ordinance 25-67, and I need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ordinance making the annual appropriations for current expenses for fiscal year ending December 31st, 2026, and declaring it as an emergency. I first, I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now, I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Now, a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 25-67 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 25-68. I need a motion to read it by title only.
Mayor, before we do, I think we needed, I wanted to propose an amendment to it, adding someone to the board, Tax Board of Review. Is this the right time to do that?
Adding Joe Ross.
It would be Joe Ross, yeah.
Joe Ross.
Yeah, so could we add?
Add him to the list.
Please, yeah.
That's correct.
I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Okay, now I need a motion to suspend, suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Now, a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Now, a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 25-68 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 25-69. I need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Now, a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Now, a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Now, a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 25-69 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 25-70. I need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the recreation center interior renovations, Phase 3 project of the project, and declaring it as an emergency. This is, we did Phase 1, we did Phase 2, now we're completing the Recreation Commission, Recreation Department in, with Phase 3, which will be highly welcomed by a lot of people. Includes the weight room and that kind of thing. Okay, I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Now, a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Now, a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 25-70 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 25-71. I need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to hire Karen Ritchie as a part-time recreation clerk for the Recreation Department and declaring it as an emergency. I need to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Now, a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Now, a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 25-71 adopted as an emergency. Okay, next we have ordinance 25-72. I need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
I'm sorry.
Is it me?
Barb, you hanging with us tonight? See you in a little bit.
Okay. Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate a contract to purchase real estate between Itnom Properties LLC and Ohio Limited Liability Corporation and the Village, Village of Evendale, and declaring it as an emergency. This is the property that involves the, what was going to be the Monte property over in Arrow Hub, and this is the roadway which we're going to negotiate for a purchase of. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Now, a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Now, a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Now, a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Walker-Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stroh?
Yes.